Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the May 2024 Regular School Board Meeting for the Richmond Bean Boston Community School Corporation. Please let the record reflect that all members are present this evening. And are there any visitors?
There was no visitor comments.
Okay, no visitor comments. So, Dr. Sanders, what about the Mustang moment?
Yes, yes. So Heather Kenzick, our director of the Edgewood Early Childhood Center is here tonight. And, you know, the E E C C is just going so well. And I don't want to steal her thunder because I'm sure she's going to tell you about the Level Four pathways. But, you know, and I've just, I just keep thinking about this more and more in, within all of our programs, really, that, you know, you just have to have the right people in the right place. And we have that with Heather Kenzick at the Early Childhood Center. And so I'm going to ask her to come up and she's our Mustang moment for tonight.
Quite brave enough to bring preschoolers to the board meeting to present. We, a few months ago, reached out to Ken Grail with Edge Media at the junior high and asked him to put together a promotional video for the preschool to kind of highlight some of the things that we've done, the Pads to Quality Level Four, the NACI accreditation that we received recently. So he brought over some junior high kids and interviewed some students, interviewed me and some teachers. And just this afternoon, this was their final project, received this video this afternoon. So I wanted to share that with, with you all tonight.
E E C C is a Pads to Quality Level Four program in Indiana, which is Indiana's highest rating for their childcare programs. And we also recently became nationally accredited through the National Association for the Education of Young Children. So parents can be assured that when they send their kids to E E C C that they're receiving a high-quality education and care.
My name is Missa. I teach pre-k here at E E C C, so form-based, play-based. So it's all learning through play because play is the work of a child. And so anything that they're doing is really related back to how we make it playful. So everything, numbers, letters, math, reading, it's all integrated into like a fun study they have interest in and just to build some early foundation skills. Some of the activities we like to do with the kids are, every year we do kind of the same units of work. So our insect unit is a really fun one. We hatch butterflies and green mantises. And we watch the life cycles of insects. That's always a lot of fun for them. And it's really hands-on. We like to do hands-on learning all together. So whether it's, you know, for learning about food and cooking and tasting and really getting the kids involved. So it's not just sitting and watching. The preschools will learn that way. They will learn by doing.
Parents can expect that their child learns receiving high-quality care and education. And then our teachers are following the development plan for creative curriculum for this age group. And then we are working hard to meet the Indiana early learning standards and make sure that their kids are ready for kindergarten.
I get to the special. I try to teach preschool because it's just the most fun. They really, they kind of love us the most and they get to share their joy. And just watching them do something is the most meaningful. You've never seen a child with a little toy or something. It's just when they accomplish the goals and even a small part of that, it just, it makes everything so much more fun in life. So it's just, I can come here and just play, 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 play. Have fun with it.
I thought the junior high kids did a great job putting that together. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Looks professional.
Yeah. Yeah, he does a nice job with that program. That's all I have to share tonight. Do you have any questions or comments? We did. We have preschool graduation for our kids that are moving on to...
Somebody said they had something going on or whatever. So preschool graduation?
Preschool graduation. Yep. That's our version of the awards ceremonies lasted a whole 15 minutes, which was appropriate for their attention, man.
Did you have top 10?
There's not a lot of dry eyes in there. We got to do it last year.
And there was a whole bunch of people crying, parents crying, hugging their kids. That's always really emotional and stuff, so.
We do a sweet little slideshow with a baby picture of each kid and their picture with their cap and gown on and what they want to be when they grow up. So it was really sweet. Yeah.
We'd be placing that on our website.
Yeah, I would like to. And we can post it on social media accounts, too.
Thank you.
For next year?
At least 50, probably. We have not advertised enrollment a whole lot, though.
Okay. So our current enrollment is around 100?
It's around 100. Yeah. We have a few that come in every week.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was an awesome video. But things like that on the website really help truly promote the Edgewood School. So that's awesome. Awesome. Okay, now to more, my name matters. So we have the consent agenda and there'll be approval of the minutes. That was from the April 15th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. And we have the Treasurers Report for April of 2024. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, sir. Gross wages for April 12th, 2024, $797,804.26. For gross wages on April 26th, 2024, $770,324.26. For a total of gross wages, $1,568,128.52. For vouchers and preclaims, prepays for 4-1-24 through 4-30-24, $1,260,799.47. For claims, regular vouchers for 5-20-24, $478,858.40. For a total of vouchers for $1,739,648.87. For grand total of $3,307,777.39. Thank you, sir.
We also have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations, C1 through 25, and personnel appointments and transfers, D1 through 18. We also have two donations to celebrate this evening. $550 from Affordable Electric Service LLC for the junior high school new softball uniforms and $450 from the Monroe County Master Gardener Association for the Edgewood Junior High School to be used for the double space and garden. There are also two overnight and out-of-state field trips. One, actually, they're both in-state. One would be the high school marching band to Vincent's University for band camp. And the other would be the fifth graders at Edgewood Intermediate School to Bradford Woods coming up in May 7th through the 9th of 2025. Though there's a couple of things to point out on here, but we'll get a motion, get it on the table.
I'll make approval.
I'll second.
Moving, seconded. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, recognize two retirees that are on the agenda for tonight. Tim Edricken, who has been with us for 40-plus years in maintenance. We knew this day was coming. And I really don't know how you can replace somebody like Tim. But thank goodness he will be around and he's a good guy, so I'm sure he'll help us out when we, when we need it. And then Meg Ashba, who's, you know, her official title is Attendance Clerk. But she's one of those people that, just because of who she is, she impacts the junior high in many, many positive ways beyond being Attendance Clerk. And, you know, I think we're definitely going to miss both those folks and I just wanted to highlight that. We have some new hires, teachers that actually, they're on the agenda tonight, but I believe Mr. Shoal told me that they will come to the June Board Meeting. They're both, or all three are not in the area right now. So the last thing I'd like to mention is what Mr. Kerr already noted is that we have two field trips, overnight field trips, basically. And they're both annual trips. It's the marching band camp at Vincent's University. And I believe that's July 21st through the 26th. And then we're already getting on the calendar for Bradford Woods for almost a year from now. May 7th through the 9th. And you just know what a great experience Bradford Woods is for our students. You know, it's not just a highlight for our students. You know, it's something if you're an adult, you're, it's something you look forward to every year. Now, back in the day when I was a teacher and principal, I looked forward to it, but I was also very exhausted at the end. Now I could go up and visit and go home. So I don't, I missed the exhausted part. But people like Andy and Jennifer Barrett and Katie Key and all the teachers, they go up there and they, you know, like I said, it's really tiring for them, but I don't think they would trade it for a minute. So just wanted to put note a couple of those out, overnight field trips.
Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda?
I would note also another retired gentleman, Keith Grayer.
Oh, yes.
Stepping down as the auditorium director, which is a position that I held for a number of years and I know how much work he put into it. And he and Sheila have done amazing work on the drama club over the years, so we will miss them as well. And then, well, and then seeing Kristy Bennett in as a temporary sub, that's a lot of, of experience for a substitute teacher. So I'm thrilled that she's doing that.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Five votes. And next we have the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Irwin?
We've got a consent, we've got a supplemental personnel report next, I think, yeah.
Didn't put my glasses on. I saw the supplemental and thought it was, okay.
Okay, so for that one, this one's in compliance with the Indiana Code. That was the new one that started back in July 1st of 2023. It's Indiana Code 2026-511.2. I sent you a separate email with the information in this for you guys to review prior to tonight's board meetings so that you guys had the information that you needed to be able to vote on it. And this is for Mr. Tru to be a sixth-grade math teacher for us at the junior high.
Move a second. Call?
I'm very excited to see Mr. Tru come back to the corporation. He was Devon's coach and, oh, yeah. And he's just an amazing person. Kenzie had him as a educator at the high school. Devon had him as a coach and I'm so happy. I actually, when I saw that come through, I actually told my kids and they were like, and Kenzie said, "I'm leaving." And I said, "That's not fair." But, so I'm very excited to see Mr. Tru come back.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And now the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Sorry, jumping ahead there.
So just start off with the review of cash flows, kind of looking at the month in review, kind of where we want it to be. The projections of revenue were a little lower. They came in a little higher than that. The expenses came in a little bit lower, so kind of on the right side of both of those. We also spent a lot of time making a lot of staffing decisions at this time of the year. So we had the ESAR grant that's, that's going away. And so we had a few people that were funded through that grant. And so at that point in time, it puts us in the position that we either keep those staffing positions on and move them into the education fund, or we move on from those staffing positions. A few of those positions, we knew for sure that we were going to keep from the get-go. Other ones, we've kind of grown into over the course of the last couple of years. And so a lot of looking into that, the Tim's Grant, we're working into the final year of that. So there's a couple of people that we knew that we wanted to keep that would slide off of that grant into the education fund. And so we spent a lot of time relooking at payroll, benefits, those types of decisions. And every year we have these discussions because this time of the year, we're really focused on looking at staffing. And I know when we come to the fall, we're going to be looking and talking about people's pay and where we're at with those sorts of things. We really try to, to spend a lot of time trying to balance those two things. And so that's reflective of what we're doing in this. A lot of those decisions that we're making, they don't really hit till the back half of '23 or '24 here because they wouldn't slide on until like August, September. So the true effect of those, you don't really start to see them until '25. So we've been spending some time looking at the in-the-weeds details of projections of 2025 cash flows to try to get a good feel for where we're at. So, you know, if it means us eating into a little bit of cash in the education fund, that's okay. We're in a, we're in a safe place. But we're, we're taking a hard look at that this year as we knew that those grants are expiring and we have some decisions to make with staffing. So that's the education fund, the debt service fund. Again, you guys know there's just not a lot of activity in this fund other than a couple of times a year. We're getting ready to gear up. We're starting to get the invoices for, for the upcoming debt payments that, that'll happen in July. And, and so really just all that we saw debt service was a small trustee fee. So then operations fund, again, things stayed really steady. We, we do expect to pay for a bus here in the month of May. Buses take like 12 to 15 months to come in. So we've gotten in the practice the last couple of years of asking for permission to order buses for the year ahead. And so we're just now getting one of those buses, probably here in the next week or so, for, that we ordered back in middle, early of 2023. So we're probably be coming to you here next month to put in another order to make sure those buses come in on time. But again, things are, things are doing well in the operations fund. We've already made a long list of summer to-dos and have gotten started on those, some of which will be things that we do in-house, some of which will be things that we have to bid out and bring other people in to help us get that completed just because it's outside of our capacity from a staffing standpoint. So things are moving along really well there on cash flows. I'll kind of pause there for a second in case you guys have any questions. But I did have a couple of other things I wanted to talk through real quick before I ended my report.
Tim's Grant?
Yeah, I want to say, Jen Anderson, help me out. This is the ending of the fifth year of the Tim's Grant.
This year or in the 2020?
Yeah, this year.
Okay, so we're, I know that was always a concern of mine. That's a nice grant.
Yep.
But we're going to have a way to...
Yep, so we have two of those positions coming in and it's kind of proofing the pudding. Jennifer's already working on another one of those as far as whether it's a continuation of that or an expansion of that collaboration. So she's already started work on that. So there may be a chance that those couple of positions maybe slide on to a reoccurring grant if we were able to receive it. But in the meantime, we've slotted that to come into the education fund until we know what happens with that. Clear nothing else? I'll keep it moving. The other thing that I sent you in an email with the cash flows was a look at a possible G O bond for this year. We, when we look at our debt plans, we're looking at them many years in advance. When we talk with Stiefel and we look at what our total tax rate is going to be and we look at projections of how much A V is going to grow, we have looked at, this is going to be the timing when we thought we'd be able to do a G O to help do a capital replacement of devices. So all student devices, all staff devices, that would be the primary purpose of this, of this issuance. We wouldn't be replacing those all in like one swath at the same time, but we'd get the funding mechanism in place. And then Rick is working on that, that plan, that timeline of, I'll do order these at this time. We'll get these going at this time. And we'd have that funding mechanism in place so that we can get those, get those going. It's crazy to think that it's been four or five years since we ordered the staff devices, five years. And so trying to keep that on that cycle. And so that is, you know, something that we knew of having the ability to do some of these G O bonds in between projects. So this is part of that plan. And even with that, in our conversations with Stiefel, we know that that's also within the plan of continuing to let our tax rate fall. And depending on how A V goes or what our needs are, if we can do more, we'll do that. But it's sticking true to what it is that you guys have said that you want to do and that we posted on our website for people to see about what our plans are for our debt and how we're taking care of that and planning for it. So I put that in there. It's about a three, it'd be about a three-month process. The idea of that is to get the approvals in place, look at where things go with our A V. Because if, say, A V didn't grow much, we might want to ratchet that back down and, and again, keep, keeping conscious of what we're doing with our rate. Or we know that, hey, A V came in good. We think that we can let it fall a little bit more, but we can continue those conversations. We can kind of go through this process, get those in place. And before we ever go out and do anything, we can have that conversation and say, this is what we want to do and communicate that. So I wanted to put that out there. Jacob McClellan from Bose McKinnney, who's been our bond counsel for the last number of years. He's the one that put this together. And so we'll continue that discussion over the next month and possibly, you know, put that before you guys here in the coming months of this year. So, next thing, moving on, I wanted to give some construction updates. There's about to be a lot of things going on here and there has been for the last number of years, and that's a great thing. But site work is, is set to begin June 3rd for the high school and E E C C projects. Phase zero, so to speak, for renovations to the high school will start to happen this summer. They called it phase zero because it was part of one of the alternate bids that we picked up. And that's to do carpet in the, in the media center side of the, the library area. And then as well as the high school front office with carpet and paint. We're also working on the football field sound system as well, trying to get that done before season starts this upcoming year. May get some of the classroom renovation work done at the high school. If it works out, we've already had some of those preliminary discussions with Skillman about what that looks like from a contractor and just timeline standpoint. So if we can turn over a couple of those classrooms during the summer, all that does is make some of those hurdles during the school year for staff and students just a little bit easier as we're kind of having moving pieces in the buildings throughout the school year. We're going to get you guys all set up. Skillman has a, a system. It's called ECOM. And within that lives meeting minutes, documents for site plans and all those things that you guys would have ability to access that, review them at your, at your leisure and be able to ask questions and those sorts of things. But it's a way that we can help keep good communication with you all about what else happening and how things are progressing. As you know, if there's any questions that come up, you can always ask us of those things as they're happening. But we thought that was a nice tool to house things in one place. And that, that's one of the things that we're excited about with Skillman's organization and preparation to keep these projects on track. So the other thing we did that through communication is, and I haven't gotten to share it out as quickly as what I wanted to, is a, is a phasing guidance doc for staff that kind of tells them what to expect and when, hey, we're going to, this group of teachers is going to move at this time and this is where they're going to go. But we're going to put that information in one spot so that people can refer back to it, put it with the documentation that Skillman has. And that can be an internal document that our staff has to review so that, you know, we're not all... We know one place to look for that. So it just, there's less questions of someone saying, hey, Mrs. Whitaker, when am I moving at this time? Or, hey, what is this going on? We can, we can look back on that and, and refer back to it for help. So hopefully we'll have that out here in the next day or so. All the contracts, once they're signed, for our different bid categories, the statement of values will get turned in by the contractors. We'll know then how to update the, the cost of the projects across because when they turn in their bid, say that bid was for a million dollars, that's across all work, across the different projects. They have to break that out by project. Then we can update our, our budget sheets and then start to look at where we're at with like equipment costs or can we pick this up and all of those things. So we'll work through those updates as that stuff gets done. And so that should hopefully be happening here within the next month. One of the other things that's going on, you guys approved this a while back, but it takes time to get this material in, which is H V A C projects. So the complete redo of the HVAC system out there on our building on, on 46 is set to start this week sometime with it being turned back over to us before August so that we can gear up for the next school year. So that's a complete redo of that system. We've got some work that's being done in the high school with balancing of hot water and cold water, looking at pumps, that sort of stuff's going to get done during the summer. And in elementary schools, all the new boilers in the elementary schools, doing abduct work, not a stuff that's really exciting, but it matters when you're not, you know, too cold or too hot in a building. The chiller work won't happen till later this year, but that's kind of an update. I know some of that stuff feels like, wow, we, we approved that a long time ago. The lead time on a chiller was about 295 days when I looked at what they had on there. So just even get that in, plus the timing of when you're actually going to come out of cooling season so you can take that down and put the new one in. It just takes, it takes more time than what you'd think. So it's, it's slow-moving, but when it's done, it'll be a good thing for all involved. So that's kind of some updates on the different construction pieces that are going on. I think I rivaled some of your updates for the length here tonight, but I wanted to touch on some different pieces so that you knew what was going on.
As a way to keep track of things, you know, after the regular day job and then you get home in the evening, you start thinking about these things.
Get some light reading going on.
You don't want to, you don't want to call or text or email or something in the middle of the night, but...
You work somewhere else, then?
There's, there's a story out there that I do. So, but anyway, I really look forward to that. Anything further?
I was going to just piggyback then with Matt on that, with the Boys and Girls Club situation. We were at the meeting Friday night, last Friday, they had, they had a report of the year and there was a Edgewood student that was the youth of the year from Edgewood Junior High. Jada or Jayla, Jalen, something of that nature. She did a great job presenting. But, but they were talking about moving out of the Boys and Girls Club to go to the Elkhorn Christian Church. It's cool how the community's working together. They're there for the summer. But, but then they also have a Lilly Grant that they're going to do some, some more work out there, correct?
Yeah, so that was part of a grant that they got about a year and a half ago. So that allowed us to do some other renovation work to the interior of that building when we had that big water loss. Yeah, and there's still some money left there to spend, but we wanted to wait till we got through this H V A C work because if we went in and started renovating some of those areas, we'd be going right back over some of the stuff that we just did. We don't want to tear up that work, so we wanted to wait. Yeah. Yeah, so those documents were in there. This is just us getting rid of the equipment that's outdated now. So Mrs. Whitaker and Mr. Wooden got their, their new cafe equipment in there. And so this is taking the old stuff and putting it online. We'll see what money we can get out of that, but we want to get that moved on and get the space back as soon as possible. Space is of a premium, so we wanted to get this before you tonight.
Approval to surplus the EPS cafe.
Need a second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now it's consideration to approve the Wells Lawn Care Agreement. Again, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is in total value, well less than the, the board threshold for approval. But because it's with an agreement, it, it comes before you guys tonight. But this is for them to take care of our, our lots, our curbs, the riprap spraying for weeds, the beds, and just making sure that that's upkept. And so this is across the corporation in different areas. It also is weed control in some of the lawns, especially that front area coming up to the high school as you approach. And so they, they're able to start spraying for that and it's at intervals throughout the year. So this is a reoccurring, this isn't like a one-time deal. It's for them to continue throughout the year. It is a continued renewal, but we can cancel at any time. Arnold, we're looking at, within maintenance, of trying to get a couple of our, our guys certified to be able to spray. You have to have the licenses to even spray on campus anyway. So eventually we might be able to move this in-house and we're looking into that. But in the meantime, I just wanted to get... But in the meantime, I just wanted to get this on a regular interval, because we were in the practice of like every year, like looking at a new one, and it became very time-consuming, and then we get behind on it. So we just wanted to get this set in motion, and then as they're working on that, when we're ready to be done with it, we can stop it and move on and do it in-house. But it's just to make sure that we continue to upkeep our campus and, and keep it looking the way that it should.
Motion?
I'd move approval.
A second.
Moving, second. Any questions, comments?
Just a little contractor maybe.
Yes. It's always, always nice to be able to work with people that, from here, so. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now on to consideration to approve bid as recommended by Skillman. Again, Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so I put in the board packet, the Skillman recommendation letter that they wrote to me. And so prior to this, we had awarded bids on the other bid packages. There was 14 bid packages across the work that's being done. One of the bid packages that didn't have any bids on it the first time around was bid package seven, which is the aluminum windows, entrances and storefronts. They re-advertised that, started kind of getting it out there to some different vendors and to get their interest, to get it around, and it went very well this time. So we had five bids that were received on May 9th, and all of those five bids were very tight in grouping of, of price, which is really good to see, just so we know that, you know, that when you start to see huge outliers, that's where you have concerns. And so it was very tight grouping of numbers. The winning bid was from the contractors Kenny Glass for $433,000. And so that is the bid that they're recommending. They did have a meeting to talk with the contractor just to review the life of the work, the work activities, their schedules, their list of subcontractors, all of those things, before they presented this recommendation to you all for your approval. So with that, I'm asking for your approval for Skillman's recommendation for the bid category seven with Kenny's Glass for $433,000.
I'm going to move approval to the purchase, or the bid.
I'll second.
Second. Do you know how this came into the, what was expected for this?
It, it came in below. So as, like the other bid categories, it came in below, which is what we had asked Skillman in the first place. As we were going through the budgeting process of looking at the different numbers, they, like we do, we tried to be conservative because we didn't want to start planning and be way above what we could afford and, and all that. So we had done the different alternates, but it did come in below. So that's the next step, is once they push out the statement of values across all projects, we'll kind of know where we stand in those budgeted categories of knowns, and then we can start to look at some of that other stuff and start to pick that off with, with the, the money that's there in the bond. So we're excited to do that and, and looking forward to that conversation with them.
Would that be on ECOM as well?
That is a separate living document, so once we update it, I can share it with you guys. Yeah. So we update that, so when we turn in, when we turn in the awards from them, when they're asking the contractor submitting for payment, those pay apps come in, we always update that sheet so that we're tracking how, how far we're into those dollars. Skillman does that with us, and we kind of balance with each other to make sure we're on the same page. And so that's a separate document that lives outside of ECOM. I'll, I'll see if maybe they can put it into there. I just, we, viewership, we obviously wouldn't want that to be viewed by the subcontractors. We'd want it to only be viewed on our side and Skillman's side, but I could ask to see if they could put it in there, but otherwise, we just have, have it as an internal document.
I think most important is, as you say, knowing where we are after calculating all the bids to see what other opportunities might, might be there.
Yeah. And one of the things that has happened that, while we're on the topic of it, is we knew that as we'd done these bonds, the interest rates are fantastic at this time. So we're earning great interest, which is also going to be great for us in the course of this project, so we're able to apply those funds to help make them go a little bit farther in our list. So that's exciting as well.
It is. It is.
All the vetting, even with this not, this is the last one to get filled, right? The last contract?
Yeah.
They did all the vetting and we're, we're good there. No worries.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to look into consideration to purchase from K-12's leading Indiana co-op, and we'll go to Dr. Sanders on.
Yes, this actually comes by way of Vicky Coffey, our Director of Nutrition Services. She, over the last few months, has completed a line-by-line cost analysis of all the supplies, including food and paperware purchases. And she's determined that we would be able to save significantly by going with the K-12 leading Indiana co-op instead of West Central Education Service Center and other Indiana co-op groups. So we, we, on behalf of Vicky Coffey, recommend your approval.
I'm going to move approval.
A second.
Need a second. Any questions, comments? Do you know how significant we're talking?
I don't know the exact numbers. Do you know, Matt?
Last time we talked, she said around $90,000.
Okay.
And so it was, there was, you wouldn't think that it'd be that significant, and some of the items, it's by as much as like 10 cents, but when you're buying the quantity that we're buying, obviously that adds up. So, yeah, so she was pretty excited about that find, and she does a good job vetting those sources. And she goes down item by item. She showed me this long, here's this, this milk carton and this, and so she does a great job of going through that.
Anything further?
Dr. Sanders, she, she sent out an email today. She's got, she's doing a program throughout the summer with kids in the community?
Yes.
Again? Okay. So that'll be out on the website and everything?
Yes, it's been advertised. And summer school will be free breakfast and lunch.
Both, okay. Okay. That's great. All right. Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to consideration to approve the curriculum quote from Amplify Learning. And for this, we have both Jennifer Barrett and Matt Irwin.
You want to join me for this one? I'll let you talk about the process a little bit, and I'll talk about the other part.
Okay, that sounds good. So this quote is actually for our reading adoption, K through five. Amplify is the parent company, and the actual curriculum that we're looking at purchasing is CKLA, which is a content, content knowledge, language arts curriculum. We are not purchasing the skills portion of this. The skills portion would basically replicate what we already have with Orton Gillingham. And all of our teachers at EPS, our assistants and many of our teachers at EIS are all trained at Orton Gillingham. There is no reason for us to change that path. We are seeing significant progress in our students in terms of teaching them the, the foundations of how to read. So we're not looking at purchasing that. That is not something that we need. What we're looking at is purchasing the reading side of this, and this is really where we're digging into not just teaching kids how to read, but this is a core content knowledge curriculum, and so it blends in a lot of science, history, arts, and it builds from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade with units that I think our kids are going to be really excited about. So one of the nice things about this, and I would say one of the benefits of a core knowledge curriculum, is that we are building a knowledge base for every single one of our students. So it can be students that have had opportunities where they may travel outside of Indiana, they have been introduced to books that take them outside into other worlds, as well as those kids who live right here in Ellisville and maybe never venture outside of Monroe County. And so it's really leveling that playing field so that we're introducing kids to all of these dynamics, and then we're testing them over that knowledge that everybody has the same foundation in. So it's changing a little bit in terms of how we are teaching reading, and it really follows the science of reading, which is a piece that we've really been building our experience in and our knowledge in, and I would say our expertise in over the last year, because it has been a doozy of a, a beast to take on. But basically what happened is, we started with this back, Larry joined us, the very first one, where we brought in Jamie Peevler, who is an expert in this area. She met with teachers kindergarten through 12th grade and helped us build this just common understanding of what we really need to focus on when it comes to a reading curriculum. And over the course of that time then, Brenda and Matt, Katie and Andy spent a lot of time in their grade levels. We ordered copies of everything that you could possibly imagine as far as samples go, and we even sent a team up to South Vermillion last week to see CKLA in action. And we feel like this is going to be the missing piece to our puzzle. We have not had a core reading curriculum K through five consistently. Brenda, I don't even know the last time that we've had a consistent program K through five. And I think both of our buildings are really hungry for not just that consistent piece, but I think that we're hungry for something that is quality, because we have definitely found that our past two adoptions have not lasted the way that we would like for them to in terms of meeting our needs. And the other bonus of this is that it also builds right into sixth, seventh and eighth grade. They already have Amplify in those grade levels, they're three years into that adoption. So we will actually be aligned K through eight with the, this curriculum. The price that you see there, I think we're actually going to see that come down. One thing that we learned from South Vermillion and that we're, we're still working with the rep on, is that we actually don't need to purchase those consumables every single year. Great advice that they gave us is purchase them every two to three years and use them in the classroom. And it's interesting how a sales rep doesn't, he's, he's not quite understanding that concept and what I'm asking for, and we're not going to stop asking for it, because he still wants us very much to purchase every single year. So we're going to get that down even further, but you're seeing the highest cost of what it would be, and we still have negotiation there on the table that we're going to be working with.
So the cost, the cost of it is the nine, so it comes from the 900 fund. So one of the, the changes that just happened in the legislative session is that as of January 1, 2025, the 900 fund will go away. It moves all of the curricular material purchases out of that fund into the education fund. Prior to this, what they had told us when the state moved to giving us an allocation per student for curriculum materials to where we weren't charging parents for those anymore, they changed that and they said, hey, at the end of every year, we're going to give you a drop based on your count and as, as what is in the allocation of the budget. They don't, they don't give that money this year, we didn't get it till the end of December. You front-load everything up to that point, and that may or may not cover everything you have, and they said if it doesn't cover everything that you have, you need to figure out locally how you're going to pay for that. It's either going to come from most likely the education fund, or it's going to come from a bond, depending on if it was, you know, some sort of capital item. So starting January 1, it moves to the education fund. So the way this will be paid for is it will be paid through the 900 fund, will move expenses to the 900 fund, because we still have some payments to make on our math adoption. But then those things will then cycle over into the education fund starting in 2025. And so you'll see the cash flows look a little bit different in 2025, just from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. Revenue just all show like the state reimbursement amount, because that drops towards the end of the year, but our claims will be a lot higher, because it's going to be in the claim section of when we're plying those materials and those sorts of things. So that's kind of a change, so it'll get paid for out of the 900 fund. If there's, you know, excess as far as costs go, it's probably going, that's going to be taken from the education fund, but the state made that change in the last legislative session, so we'll have to adjust to that coming up here soon.
Do we have motion?
Approval.
A second.
Moving, second.
Quick, quick question on that. So that, that 900 fund's gone, is the per pupil reimbursement going to go up a little? Is that how they're doing it, or are they just giving us a lump sum? We don't know yet.
They give you a per pupil amount. This year it was like 152 or 155 per kid.
Right.
And then it's based on your ADM, and then it all drops in one lump sum. And so.
Okay.
It depends. So we're coming up on, on, you know, legislative budget session, and we'll see what they do. I don't know if they'll up it. I don't know if they'll, what they'll do with it. But right now, you know, the allocation is what the allocation is, and so.
Right.
We get what they, they send out based.
So we have to be prepared.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, yeah, if what we're spending is outside of what it is that they're bringing to us, it'll either have to come from the education fund, or it could possibly come from a GO bond, but it just depends. We'll have to react to that as that comes along. The, the cash flows of how this work is a little bit more complicated, because you have these big curriculum adoptions that cost significant dollars, and these companies want you to pay for it right now. They want you to pay six years' worth of curriculum in two years, but the state's giving it to you one year at a time. And so you start to do just logically on the cash flows of how that works. That's why we're coming back to these companies, saying, no, we want this over three or four years. Can we do it over six years? You know, and trying to work through them with that, and then along with the other things that we pay for, for curriculum materials, whether that's classroom sets of books or whatever that might be, depending on the situation.
Okay. So that, that amount that you put in there, the, I think it was 255, that's per year or for the six-year? That's, but they want to front-load it?
They like that, but that's not what we're going to do. And Rick and I are working closely over, we're trying to make sense of what we've been purchasing with curriculum K through 12. And we'll be working with Matt this summer to help create a budget for that, so that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Start to reel that in, you know, just little things like going back and renegotiating contracts for some of our online subscriptions, things like that. So we're really digging in with the teachers to find out exactly what they're using, how often they're using it, which of our applications actually cross over? So are we paying for two or three different things that do the same thing? So we're going to be working over the summer to, to help Matt get that cleaned up, because that's a piece on our end that we can hopefully help bring that budget into alignment before it moves over into the education fund.
Okay. And speaking of that, I know we were here a year ago, switching gears, we did a K-12 math adoption, and is, is everybody on board? How was the first year?
Yeah.
Just a quick 30 seconds.
It's always bumpy, because you're learning something new, and I would say that it has gone really well. We have seen some good boost. Actually, Mr. Ackerman and I were just reviewing some SAT scores. We'll get iLearn scores back here pretty soon, so we can see how those have gone. We've seen a significant bump in growth as far as math and our iReady scores. I don't know that I can necessarily say that that's because of a curriculum, but I do hear from our teachers that it is going more smoothly, and I think that this is more of a long-term piece that we're going to be looking at as far as three to four years down the road. That's where I want to see those numbers and see those trends start to climb. Right now, I, I don't know that I can say that anything that we've seen in terms of a positive boost, I always want to attribute that back to the teachers more than I want to attribute it to any textbook that's out there. But I do think that we have the right resource in their hands, and I'm anxious to see what that's going to mean for our kids, not only on iLearn, but I think SAT is a great gauge for us in terms of that down-the-line piece and, and are, are our kids meeting benchmark there? So, yeah, I don't have a great answer, but I'm anxious to see where that's going to land us in the next two or three years.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything further? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of policy revisions, and so this would be a consideration to approve revisions to the following policies, and they are listed in the agenda, if you'd like to see those numbers. And so, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so at the April board meeting, if you remember, we presented these policy revisions for first reading, and gave the board a, a month to look those over, ask any questions. And so we're bringing those same policies back to you tonight for approval. We worked with Neola, who works with Lewis Capus Law Firm, and also with Christine, we work with Christine. And so when we get these policy updates from Neola, we'll run them by the appropriate people and get their input. If it's related to nutrition services, we run it by Vicky. Matt always sees them. If it's curriculum, we run them by Jennifer Barrett. If it's special ed or Title IX, we, or Title I, we run those by Jennifer Anderson. And so we get all the input from various people in our, our school corp- And so we get all the input from various people in our, our school corporation and make sure that we're making the best decision possible. So all that, all these policies have been vetted through that filter. And so we bring them to you tonight for approval.
Do we have motion?
I'd move approval.
One second.
We're seconding. Any questions, comments?
I just, it, as is usually the case, I think most of it was to bring us into alignment with new legislation. And some of it just seems like wordsmithing, just.
Right. A lot of it is. But it also gives us a chance to read through it and analyze it and, you know, remember the details. And so it's, it's really a good process.
I appreciate you guys just chatting this afternoon about the centralized background check of the corporation and what each building is being consistent in checking backgrounds. Because when it comes to us, all that's done.
Yeah.
And it's, I really appreciate that.
We've, you know, as part of our Doing Business Better initiative, the hiring process is just, we really fine tuned it over the years to make sure that everybody's following the policy. There's required, before anything comes to the board, there's required background checks and appointment sheets and making sure that the number of days a person is going to be working, how much they're going to get paid, that is, it goes through several people. And so that just helps us to make sure that by the time it does get to you, hopefully we've caught everything.
Appreciate it.
Anything further? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next is consideration to approve a joint resolution with the town of Ellisville for the donation and acceptance of a tract of land. And I'll kind of start with this one. This is an exciting piece. The school corporation owns property north of the two baseball softball fields that are by the soccer field. And Sycamore, a goal has been to get Sycamore to connect to State Row 46 at some point. Gives our buses another way to disperse. It would come with a stoplight, so the safety would, would go up. And there's a gentleman, Chris Smith, and his organization is developing what they call the Harmon Farms there. And they will put in the roadway. But we are in between his development and Sycamore. And so therefore, they want access through our, our property. And in order to do that, we can't sell it without putting it out to bid or anything like that. But we can donate it to the town and that's who's eventually going to get the road anyway after it gets dedicated. And so we want to donate a part of this property, just basically the roadway, nothing, nothing else. We still have property on both, both sides of it that if, you know, there's something we need that we can develop out there, you know. And so the resolution is to cover that. And a couple of key points to mention is that the town of Ellisville is agreeing to all the cost of transferring, which shouldn't be much, but getting it all through the county recorded and everything. They're accepting the donations. And if a benefit to the school corporation, not only the access, eventual access to State Row 46, but another benefit is we've asked that they make sure that any utilities that do get put in, in that right-of-way, road right-of-way, that it's sufficient for if we need to develop something for our purposes on either side of that road, that we have, we can hook on. It's going to be sized appropriately, which I think they would have done anyway. But it's just nice to have it in the agreement. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Sanders if you.
Yeah, this is really a good opportunity for us and something we've been exploring for a number of years. The, the idea of expanding Sycamore Street to 46 will have a number of different benefits to the school corporation. I understand that they're, they're, they're going to put a stoplight out on, on 46. So this will help our, our buses to be able to get in and out more safely. It'll also help us as we transport our students to not only home and then to school in the morning, but also out to the Boys and Girls Club. But I'm also looking forward to the benefit of providing another entrance into our campus. If you've ever been on Reeves Road in the morning with the traffic going up to the preschool and the, the two elementary schools, you know it could almost sometimes reach clear down to, to 46. So hopefully with parents maybe, maybe being able to come in from that direction, it'll help with, with that issue. So the town council has approved a resolution, a joint resolution that Christine and their attorney Darla Brown worked on. Now, since then, we've made some changes to that per the direction of the board. And Christine continues, has continued to work with Darla Brown. And so at your seat tonight is a copy of the resolution that, that they have collaborated on. And so I'm going to let Christine take it from here.
The, the big change Dana went over, that's ensuring that we've got a proper utility size in place in case there's future development either to the north or to the south of the road. And we believe that that will be accepted. This does have to go back to the town to approve the revised version. But I've been in discussions with Ms. Brown. The other changes are very minor, just kind of some cleanup. You'll notice there's a new whereas clause, the second one on there, just further defining how RBB is able to do this transfer without having to go through the typical process of having the property assessed or appraised and then going through a bid or advertising process. So that's, those are basically the changes in front of you, the deed. Again, it was just kind of a minor cleanup that Dana Kerr and I worked on. And there was no issue with that from the town's attorney.
So the second. Whereas the Indiana Code 361118, that's the one you changed?
Yes, that's the, that's the new one.
And then the other one was the utilities addition? Yeah, okay.
Number four on page two.
All right, thank you.
The original whereas just showed where they could accept the property. It didn't say the legal basis on which we could donate the property. So that was just to, to make that. Also, like any resolution or agreement, would be signed by the president and attested to by the secretary. However, I think any motion should include the ability of the board president to sign the quitclaim deed to make sure that's authorized in a, in a meeting. So do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
One second.
Yep. Christine, I had, I had a couple of quick questions, Christine. Can you hear me? So just to, this has gone on for a long time and they've readjusted the way it's going to look to where now we're only really quitclaiming deed in less than an acre of land. So we'll still have about 19 acres there for our future growth and development, which I'm ecstatic about because I know part of it moved all the way into the city land on the Wells property. Who's responsible? Does this, does the city go out and talk to at least make the neighbors aware of what's going on? The, the other houses that are in that area or is that something the school should do? Or they need to know?
That's definitely not on us to do. I don't, you probably know more about the processes for when notice is required, but that's part of the plan commission's approval of the development itself. There is a notice that goes out to adjacent property owners and they're given the opportunity to provide feedback, object, that sort of thing, but not us.
The Department of Public Affairs Director, Kephan, he does a pretty good job. I'm sorry, notifying people. So I'd say they'll be notified, yeah.
There's requirements to get the platting through.
Okay.
That has to be, notice has to be sent to adjacent property owners, sometimes within a certain distance. And then there also has to be notice in the paper and there also has to be signage on the property itself of when the hearing will be held. And the public has opportunity to go to that hearing and public hearing and give their comments, you know, did they like it? Do they not like it? Do they like part, do they not like part? And then the plan commission would take that under consideration in reviewing the plat. So yes, it is notified, there is notifying.
I know in the Hunter Valley Farms, the redevelopment commission had an open house that they used the Ellisville Fire Department to talk to the homeowners because they were going to cut through that subdivision off Arlington. And they didn't like what they heard. The RDC did not like the information they got back from the homeowners. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page over there. So, okay.
Okay. Anything further? Any good motion, what did include for me to be able to sign the quitclaim deed as the board president? Anything further? Nothing? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's a wonderful thing for the school corporation and the town. It's definitely a win for everyone. Last action item is consideration to approve revisions to the 2425 school calendar. Dr. Sanders.
Yes. So you're familiar by now with the 1003 flexibility waiver. This is our, our third waiver that we've written and submitted and have now been approved. So the State Board of Education on May 8 approved our waiver. And so the two statutes that, that we asked to be waived were 20-30-2-2, which dictates that school corporations have to track instructional time by days. And so we're going to, we've asked to track that time by minutes. And also the, the Indiana Code 20-30-2-3, which says that a school corporation shall conduct at least 180 instructional days. Well, we have, we have so many instructional minutes above the requirement that we can actually have our students go 178 days and still be well above the requirements for how much time we should devote to curriculum and to instruction. And so we did that this year. We had two flex days. One was November 7th, where we had parent teacher conferences and professional development. And then the second one was April 8th, which happened to be a solar eclipse day. And we ended up having virtual professional development for the teachers, which worked out very well. I thought that was well received by the teachers. So this year, we're proposing revising the 2425 school calendar by adding November 5th as flex day number one and February 14th as flex day number two. So on these flex days, teachers come to, to school and the students do not. It's not an e-learning day because they've already put in their required number of instructional minutes. So I'm asking the board to approve these two revisions to the 2425 calendar. And then we'll send these revisions to the parents through an email. We'll put it on our website. And then prior to the start of school year, we always send home a magnet that the parents can put on their refrigerator and be able to know what's going on and when things are happening in the school corporation. So I recommend your approval.
I move through.
I'll say again.
Moving, seconding. Any questions, comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. One thing I want to back up a moment for, I wasn't sure, for the Amplify quote, did we give the value of that?
I don't think we did.
Okay, the.
Yeah, the quote, there's a value in the quote in the board packet.
Yeah, the grand total was $255,072. I just didn't know if that got mentioned or not.
Yeah.
But it was a one-time, it's not an annual fee, correct?
It's not an annual fee.
It's a one-time fee. That's what I was.
The total cost of the six-year adoption.
I just couldn't remember if that was done. So I just wanted to make, make sure we didn't miss something. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Sanders.
All right. We had a pretty amazing day in Edgewood today. First of all, we had a, I wasn't able to be at this one, but we had our K-5 and then our kindergarten awards day this morning. Is that correct, Mrs. Wood? And Matt and I, Matt attended that. I attended the first grade, second grade. And so those award programs are just, they're just pretty exciting to see the, the love between students and parents. And, and I really want to give a shout out to Brenda and Matt Wooden because they, I just really appreciate their personal touch to the, the awards. It's, it's not just passing out awards and redundant, you know, over and over again. They really put their own feelings and it's just a meaningful program. But I also wanted to let you know about a special morning we had at the high school. Dr. Katie Jenner, our Indiana Secretary of Education, and Mr. Bob Heaton, our Indiana State Representative, visited Edgewood High School this morning. This has been an effort going on for a long time that, that we've really wanted to have Dr. Jenner come and visit our, our schools. Because if you've been paying attention to what, what Dr. Jenner has been envisioning for this, for the state of Indiana over the last year and a half, two years, as we've watched it here unfold, we could comment a number of times, well, we are right in line with what she's wanting to do statewide, looking at rethinking how we do high school, to be able to make the high school experience much more meaningful to our students, more engaging, and therefore doing a better job of preparing our students for life after high school. So some of the things that we've been talking about, you've heard Jennifer Barrett say many times, talking about our internship program, our career pathways, our student-run businesses. Those are all right in line with what Dr. Jenner is, is wanting to do. And so Bob Heaton, he attended the meeting we had with our Indiana Business Advisory Leadership Group. And immediately afterwards, he said, I think to Dirk and myself, that he was going to be contacting Dr. Jenner. And he has been working hard because her schedule, we witnessed it today. Her schedule is very tight. And so it was a very great day. We, we started out in the coffee shop and we had our students really doing a lot of the talking about the coffee shop and the business side of that. Then we went down to the ILC Design, our other student-run business, and they talked to Lisa Wilson and, and some more students. And then we had a group of students, I think about 20 or so students. And Dr. Jenner took it over from there. And she just started talking to them about the new plans for the, the new diploma for high school students. And, and our students, they, just the, the deeper we get into this, one of the things that I'm learning is how much more we should value and trust what our young people bring to the table, their ideas. And, and the. the table, their ideas and, and the questions they asked. And sometimes the concerns that they shared were sharp. And, and I was just so impressed. And told them, Dirk kept them afterwards to talk a little bit longer. And I was hoping to get back in time to, to just tell them how impressed I was. So it was a great morning. And I think we definitely have, we've been putting the school corporation on the map throughout Indiana. And I think we really did that in terms of the people at the state level who make the decisions that impact us. I think we really provided them with a view that Edgewood High School, Edgewood Schools are a true example of where the state's trying to go. And so this is, I know this is going to take a little bit longer tonight, but it, it was just a fabulous day. I've asked Jennifer Anderson and Jennifer Barrett and Dirk and Matt, O'Kent was there today, if, if any of them wanted to come up and, and share their insights from this morning. So this is un, well, they knew about it, but they don't have anything, they don't have planned words.
So, and they continue to do kind of themes of they want a meaningful experience, they want opportunity, they want something that is going to be impactful on their future. And I think one of the things that, like Dr. Sanders talked about is exciting is the changes that the state is looking at. We've, we're already one step ahead of that. And, and look at the difference that it's making for our kids and how excited they are about the opportunities and the things that they're getting to do that make them want to be at school and learn more. And how can I go further with this? How can we break down this barrier? That's exciting. And we're empowering kids and our staff is a part of that. And it's nice to see that the state is recognizing what it is that we're doing here in Edgewood, what our staff is doing. And not only seeing our kids engaged, because really what, what they get blown away, blown away by a lot of times isn't us sometimes, it's the kids and what they're doing and the way that they get up there and speak and present. So I think that a lot of times there's that feeling of, wow, look what we're doing, look what our kids are doing and look where they're going. So I think that's really exciting.
I think there were a couple of moments that were like really exciting. So Dr. Jenner came in first and we were standing in the office waiting for Representative Heaton. And she mentioned that Representative Heaton had called her right after leaving. So he was here for a bit, for a meeting with our, with the, the group that Dr. Sanders has put together. And he called him, he texted her right after he left and said, you've got to go to Edgewood High School, you got to see the great things they're doing. So then he walked in the door and the first thing he said was, I sent her a text right away and told her about the great things. So it just really put it together, the sincerity of what I think he really saw when he and Representative Yoder came over about a month or two ago. And, and now they got to see the opportunity, even he said he saw so much more today. But one of the biggest moments was for the students and to have that opportunity and to see their maturity and their questions and the level of questions. But after everyone left and I met with the group, it was really fun to kind of go over everything and let them ask more questions and kind of fill in those gaps. This new diploma is awesome. It's enlistment, enrollment and employment, and that's the focus. And as I said to them, and this is when they really got it was, right now you receive a high school diploma. In the future, you will receive a plan for your preparation for life after high school. And that's the difference. And that was kind of an aha moment to them. So it was a great day. I smiled all day.
I think one of the things that impressed me the most and, and what kind of moved me the most is the areas that I help manage here in RBB are typically students who struggle to go to college, students who have challenges in front of them. And what Dr. Jenner and, and the state is proposing with the new diploma and the options that it will provide and the opportunities that it will provide to students who may not be quite on that college path or may struggle to get on that college path and maintain that path, that they have other options. And they have the flexibility, which sometimes is forgotten. And so listening to her explain how this diploma, this new diploma will impact every student. So when we talk about educating the whole child, they're, the state is starting to truly grasp and internalize that. And to, to know that she is an incredibly staunch supporter of that really warmed my heart because it's an area that's been a challenge for many students for many years. And I feel they finally have a voice and they finally have that opportunity. So it was great to hear it from her, how much she's taking in from schools across the state, how much she's taking in from students, from parents, from parent groups, and that they are really working to be open and to be very transparent and to make sure that every student has the opportunity to succeed in whatever path they may lead. So it was, it was, it was awesome day. It was, it was an awesome day.
You didn't cry?
I didn't cry. I'm about ready to. I was so proud of her, she didn't cry.
I always, I don't know what happened.
Just to echo again what they've said, today was a day that Edgewood Schools put a mark on the map. And it was pretty amazing to watch our team of students and our team of teachers and counselors and administrators represent Edgewood in a way that Dirk described perfectly. I, I had a perpetual smile on my face, the goofiest look you could possibly imagine in every picture because I couldn't stop smiling. The other piece too, is it gave us an opportunity to share some of our challenges that we have in high school and some of the red tape that still exists. And we were very open and very honest with her about what that looks like and the help that we still need from the state to, to tear that red tape down. And I truly believe that she's, she and the legislators are going to make that happen. Today, I think is the first time I've walked away from something politically driven in terms of education. And I walked away and I felt like we are in great hands. I felt like education is a priority in the state of Indiana. And I felt like our careers are valued on a level that I haven't felt in a really long time. And it was just a piece that I don't think I'm going to stop smiling about for a long time. And like I said, I, I think that we put Edgewood Schools on the map today in a way that it hasn't been in a long time. So as school board members, you guys should be so proud of what these guys have accomplished because it was, it was pretty incredible.
So my number one thought really at the end of the day was, I don't know how anybody could walk away from the job I have now and leave it with anybody else because those students were so amazing. And Brad, I thought about you because you would have loved it, you would have been so impressed. You just would have been right on it. And then one other thing I want to say, kudos to Dr. Sanders because all of this doesn't happen until he brought Jim Barrett into this position and helped create the other half. So we have the ICC, we have the college part of it going and we're ready to go there. We, we're going to be having students graduate with their freshman year completed. We had that, but we couldn't do the rest of it without Jen. And she's just done amazing things for Edgewood High School as well. So thank you.
Now, to be fully transparent, we were also very nervous because when, when we walked over there before Dr. Jenner even arrived, we walked into the school, high school office and there were camera people taking still pictures and video and having mics. And all of a sudden we realized, wow, this is, this is a big deal. So I couldn't wait to share this with you tonight. The other good news, if you've been on 46 today on Main Street or Temperance Street, you'll see the banners for 2024 graduates. And I, I, we, I think we started that during COVID, but we liked it so well, we, we've, we're doing it every year now. It's just a really, an excellent way to congratulate our students and involve the community in knowing who our students are. So Wednesday is the last day of school. I don't know if everybody knows that. Do you guys know that? Okay. Wednesday's the last day of school. And so I was, I've been thinking about just some of the great things that have, have happened this school year. And you know, when you're having a good time, time flies by. This has been such a great school year and it's, but it's been fast. And I was trying to think, you know, why is this, you seem much more quick than previous years? And first I thought it was because I was getting older. But I think it's because we had a lot of great things that, that have happened and, and Dirk touched on this, but one of the things that, that we did this year is we really strengthened, strengthened our central office administrative team with now having, of course, Matt and I and Jennifer Anderson and bringing Jennifer Barrett on board. We're doing such a great job, I believe, in providing support to our teachers and our principals, curriculum support, support in, in each of their areas. We could, there's a lot underneath their umbrella that I could go through tonight. But I just wanted to start off by just saying that has helped this year to be so successful. We had a success, a successful bargaining session back in the fall that led to increases in salaries. We've had a lot of, a lot of visitors to Edgewood Schools this year, State Senator Shelley Yoder. We already mentioned Bob Heaton, he's been here twice this school year. Our business leaders advisory team, the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce have had a number of events at the high school this year with the latest being, they have a, a coffee network time where their, our local businesses come together just to network and, and over a cup of coffee. They did that in our coffee shop. And so that was pretty cool. And then we had the internship fair with a number of different businesses wanting to participate in that program. We added a third school resource officer and other safety measures. And that is also, all these things are just really paying off for our school corporation. As you know, our Marchy Mustangs have won, they won back-to-back state championships. They're second in a row this year. And I also received a letter saying that the ISMA organization named them an all music award program. So congratulations on that. I put that letter in your packet. The Winter Percussion won back-to-back-to-back state championships. And so how exciting is, is that? Show Choir have had a lot of successes this year. And maybe the biggest one was going to New York City and getting a number of awards and first place achievements in the Heart of America competition. Obviously, if you're following our athletics, I think we've had a good year in athletics, fall, winter and spring. We've talked a lot about this year, about high reliability schools. And we've, I think we've really got off to a great start with that. That's just like, you know, hi, this is a new initiative. I say new, but it really, what really appeals to us is that once again, we are ahead of that and what we were already doing is already aligning with high, high reliability schools. And so our schools are all working on level one and doing a great job. We've received thousands of dollars in grants this year. We added a career pathways and we're up to 15 now. We've already mentioned the Coffee Corral and the ILC Designs. And those two student-run businesses have now been given membership into the Ellisville Area Chamber of Commerce and all that comes with that membership. The marketing class has taken over telling our Edgewood story. And I think that's so cool. The Edgewood Showcase we had back in September was a huge hit. We're going to do that again next September. Gave us a really great opportunity to tell our story to our primary and our intermediate parents about what their children have to look forward to at a junior high and high school. And I think we accomplished that goal. We, we've already mentioned progress we've made with math and reading curriculum this year. Donations, look at that number. $11,756 this year in donations to Edgewood Schools. The April 8th solar eclipse was a once-in-a-lifetime event and that worked out well for us. We've revamped our internship, internship program at the high school. And that's really received a lot more interest, not only from our businesses, but our students. Another great year at Bradford Woods. And I put students learning to read. Now you might think, okay, that happens all the time. But as a teacher, you know, that's near and dear to my heart. And I remember as a, I taught fourth grade, but I remember as a principal that I had the opportunity to go to our first grade classrooms and they, the first graders would read to me. And it was the most remarkable thing to watch first graders go from being non-readers to readers. And I always said, if I had to start my career over again, I, I might do first, first grade. I don't think I have the energy anymore for that, but just a lot of other great accomplishments by, by our students and teachers. And to end that list of awards, an award that's been presented to the school board for the commendable award by the Indiana School Boards Association. And that is given to the school board for their efforts to participate in professional development yourself, attending different ISBA events, the law conference. And so I'm going to present this to Dana real quick. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple more things real quick. Our end of the year staff celebration is May 23rd at 12:15. If you want to see some teachers starting to relax and have a good time, come to, to see that event. We're, we're looking for EPS to, to break the ice and finally win the competition. We know the high school and intermediate and junior high have all won, so they're, they're due, right? Hey, I'd, I'd put a little pressure on at least one. What's that? And then of course commencement will be on June 1st at 11 o'clock at the high school. So it's been a fantastic year. It's just a pleasure to, to be part of Edgewood Schools and I was thankful every day for that.
Very much. Definitely a lot going on. Now we have RBB EA comments. Mr. Yoder.
Go ahead. I'm going to start, we're both talking. But I just really loved the preschool video. They're, they've been in our building for several years now. And I can attest to our, my first graders still talk about their preschool teachers and they're just getting such a great education there. And it's just paving the way for what we do in first grade. Thank you for the new curriculum. We're really excited to get that content curriculum. And we're actually reserving, I think all three of our grade levels have reserved our curriculum days for right before school. So in hopes that we get it in time and can start digging deep into it. But, and then finally, I just want to say, you know, thank you to Mr. Irwin and Dr. Sanders. They've just continuously kept us in the loop with the renovation process and, you know, when are tubs coming? And so, you know, simple to just lots of questions and, and the teachers were happy to hear about the, the notes that Mr. Irwin is going to send our way. You know, I You know, I started my career here when EPS opened. I remember walking through the crayon hallway when it was just drywall. So I think I'm pretty lucky to say I'm going to have two brand-new classrooms. And in many ways, I don't feel like our school is that old. Vicky Entrikin has just kept that school immaculate. So yeah, there's wear and tear, but I, it's hard to believe we're already getting that renovation. So just thank you for all of that. We're excited for, for it. It's going to be interesting.
Brandy was mentioning that video and it was nice to see little kids at play. Cause I had the total opposite this morning and starting my day off with giving my first period calculus kids the IU exam for two hours. They were grousing about it all day. I heard it from all the other teachers. So yeah. They deserve a little play after that, that's for sure. Also I'd like to highlight, emphasize Tim Entrikin retiring. He's been a fixture forever. Meg Ashby, I think I've had most of her kids in class. She is a wonderful person to be around. And had to throw out Tom Norris, who is I think our RBB chameleon. So hope he enjoys social studies for as long as he stays there. I'm just, I'm just ribbing him. He knew I was going to say that. Appreciate having a flex waiver again. It's nice to have two days uninterrupted, not checking on e-learning and things like that. So those are appreciated by us. Thank you very much. And kind of tagging on what Brandy said, appreciate admin, looking forward in terms of renovation things, technology needs in the future, you know, they're always taking those things into consideration so they don't catch us at the last moment. And I will also say at the end here, as we have two days, I always say I'm glad as a high school teacher I have finals because I couldn't imagine when elementary teachers are doing this last week. So I appreciate their hard work because I, it's five times harder than what we do. There's no doubt about it. So with that, let's have a good two days and we'll see you on Thursday. May the best team win.
Wonderful. Now we have board member comments. Mr. Donald.
Thank you, sir. So happy to have such a good day today. It's so neat to see you all smiling. Look at her smile. I've met Dr. Jenner a couple of times, always impressed. I've known Bob Heaton for many years. So he's a great, great guy, no doubt. But yes, Jennifer, I'm very proud of this system. I'm very proud of all of our educators and our, and our administration. That's what makes the thing go. So I appreciate all your hard work. I appreciate Jerry and Matt. I appreciate you, Mr. President. You, you put a lot into this and I really appreciate that. So, all right, that's it for me.
Well, first of all, I'm very encouraged by what I heard about, from the administration about our visitors today. You'll forgive me if I remain skeptical until I see what happens in the next general assembly session. I also want to congratulate all the spring sports teams, especially Emma and Ashley for their performance in the sectional. And good luck to softball and baseball teams. Got to celebrate the Lunch Hero Day, School Lunch Hero Day a couple of weeks ago. And that was a lot of fun. It was, and, and well-deserved recognition for those hard-working people. Saw the awards program and I was thinking we might have to start talking about building a parking garage behind the elementary schools. There were so many cars out in the, in the grass and everywhere else. It, anyway. Good luck to all the seniors on their last two-day finals. And I am looking forward to graduation and, and starting to think about the 24-25 school year.
Yeah, people go before you. You have all those things in your, in your thought process. But it's wonderful that we all think very much alike. And I feel like we're a pretty strong board and I'm super thankful I'm part of it. So I, you know, always the donations, I always, you know, every donation that we get for our students is, is amazing. We appreciate it so much. Congratulations to another very successful year, school year. A little bittersweet for me because my daughter is graduating. But the thing that I always go back to is she's ready. She's ready because of RBB. I mean, truly, I believe that. You know, it's, it's hard. But when you look at her and she's just beaming and there's nothing that's going to stop this kid. And it's because of how she's been set up to, to go into the world. So thankful for, for RBB raising her. And yeah, I'm, I'm excited for graduation and you guys have a wonderful summer off.
Ditto, ditto to everybody. I do have to put my, my plug in at the end of the year. Great honors night. Mr. Ackerman, dollars for scholars this year. Edgewood Scholars gave away about $70,000 this year, along with some, quite a few other scholarships that are not part of that. So I appreciate your efforts with that, Dr. Sanders. And I know Brittany Tucker's helping out from the school with that. And each of them at, at the minimum, I think, received a thousand dollars on these individual scholarships. So, so kudos to that. Congrats to Tim and, and Ms. Ashby on their retirement. And then Ms. Anderson, it's okay to cry. I mean, seriously, I, I, when you, when you start crying, I start crying. But it's okay. At the end of the year, you gotta, Mr. Ewing, it's over. I'm going to relax. And then when you go home, you about, you just, you're just emotional and that's okay. And take time to reflect this summer and reach, and then recharge. Give it a couple of weeks and then recharge because it's, I don't know, Miss, what is it? 61 days. We get to start again. It's all exciting. So, so have a great summer.
Thank you, everyone. I, as always, appreciate everybody coming out and, and sharing the night with us. I am excited about Dr. Jenner and Mr. Heaton coming to our schools and how impressed that they have been. And that's because of all of you guys setting, setting that up for success. So really appreciate that. We do hope that the state stops micromanaging teachers and lets them do their job. They are highly qualified professionals and they should be treated as such. And so I really hope that they focus on that, if, if anything. And just, you know, they're, they're wonderful. I mean, look at, look at how much we're enjoying tonight and all the successes we've had. And it's because we've got all of you and great teaching staffs. And, and so they need to leave them alone. Let them do their job. So. Let's see, Tim and Meg and Keith Carter, you know, great, great people. It's meant a lot to the, to the school. I tried to keep notes. I'm so excited about the ECOM so we can keep track. There's so much going on. It, it's hard. And so being able to check on it whenever it's convenient for us is really nice. I really like the Faze document for the staff, getting the staff involved, keeping them informed what's going on. I think it is really beneficial. And if there's more of that we can do, let us know. Because it is so important for that. I'm so grateful for how the town of Ellisville and RBB schools work so well together. Always trying to make sure that, you know, we're, we're helping each other out. And, and, and so it's just a great partnership to have with the town. One of the successes too is the junior highs promotional video. I mean, the video was great about EECC, but you gotta give props to the junior high students putting that thing together. I mean, they're, they're amazing. And so, you know, I just really wanted to highlight, not EECC, but highlight the junior high because that was fabulous. As far as the end of the year staff celebration, I think if the referees would be fair, EPS might actually, it's kind of hard for EPS because they're, they're so much about getting the little kids to play by the rules. And so it's hard for them not to. So that's all I'll say about that. And I am looking forward, forward to commencement. Like I said, it's the best day of the year to be on the school board for me. And it, and it has and always been. And I stare at each one of those graduates' faces as they come across. And you know, just all the different emotions that you can read out of them is just, it's just amazing. And, and so I, it, it is such an honor to be part of that. So. I want to thank CATS. They, they come and fit through these meetings and, and, and do a great job of, of getting the word out, you know, getting RBB's story out there as well, getting it available for people. So we appreciate them. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting and you guys all have a wonderful last few days of school.